Well, it's nine o'clock, so we'll call this meeting, the special meeting of the Commissioners' Court in Titus County, to order here on the 25th day of March 2024 at nine o'clock. We'll start with him, Casey, Jimmy.
Dear gracious heaven, Father Lord, I just come to you thanking you, Lord, for all you do for us, and thank you for the rain you sent our way, Lord. Lord, I just ask you just to be with us now if we go into this meeting this morning, or just give us the wisdom that we need to do what's right for the Titus County, Lord. Lord, I just ask you to be with our service people, just keep them safe wherever they're at, or bring them home safely to them. Lord, I just ask you now just to go with us, forgive us for we fail, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one on the agenda, public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with section number 551.042 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Check that microphone there, Mr. Ward, see if it's on or not.
Judge Commissioners, ladies, I am here today to clear up some misunderstandings about the hazardous mitigation plan that expired on 2018 under the guidance of Judge Lee and Chief McRae. The Commissioners' Court has appointed Adcock to update this plan. A phone call was made to Adcock with a question. The question was, are they waiting on a physical address? The answer is no. I have been in contact with Adcock at least two times a week, asking if I could be of any assistance on gaining any kind of information that they might need. Their reply was, not at this time. What the county is needing, the physical address, is for the Titus County Emergency Management Plan. This plan, there are 22 annexes in this plan. Some have expired, some are still current. I was told by TIDM to start with the most ones that was expired. Some of these annexes have been completed, some are still waiting for approval. For example, Basic Emergency Management Plan for the ELC interface, the County Mitanigation Plan, the County SOP, Emergency Service Responsibilities, Incident Command, Mutual Aid Agreements. This information is, we don't have at this time. As the Titus County Fire Department moves forward, this information will become available. Annex M, Communications, ELC, County Warning System, and a lot of the other annexes also require names, physical address, firefighters, apparatuses, communications. At this time, we do not have that. As the fire department moves forward, we'll start gaining this information, these annexes can be completed. In regarding to county fire, on an average year, the county pays the VFDs, if they do not receive any kind of grants through the year, roughly $280,000 a year. In 2022, '23, the NorTex received a cabin chassis; five-star received extrication tool grant. The county paid the VFDs almost $380,000 that year. So, the county pays truck and building insurance. Used to, back several years ago, our fundraiser, we'd get seven, eight thousand dollars after we paid our expenses. Four thousand, I had to cut a check for for insurance. Now, the county pays it, allows us to use that four thousand dollars to purchase equipment and stuff. The county pays for the building insurance, truck insurance, firefighter run money, seventeen hundred dollars in additional allowances. Training, training money if they complete four hours or more per month, a thousand dollars for hose, bunker gear for structural firefighters if needed, Texas A&amp;M training if anybody wants to go Texas A&amp;M. County pays all this. So, people say that the county doesn't do a lot for the VFDs. When was the last time the city said, let's just put a hundred thousand in our budget to give to the VFDs in Titus County for their support and helping out? None, zero. So, in behalf of the VFDs in the county, I'd like to say thank you.
Mr. Ward, one thing I'd like to clear up, the other day they were asking about that address, there's two different mitigation plans, is that not correct? But everything is to Adcock. Adcock has everything, we're just waiting on the government to do their part of that plan, is that correct?
As of now.
As of now?
Yes.
And then the other one is where they need the address, and there's a little bit of confusion when I was speaking to those people the other day about the address, and there's two different deals, so that's what you're starting with.
They sent out an email to the incorporated cities, and I think Monica also got one, that was asking about, how y'all doing? It was asking about court order codes and stuff like that in their community, and then I asked her if they heard back from them, and she said no, so I contacted Talco in Winfield, and they said they was working on it this time.
Great, thanks, sir.
So, I told them I'd come over and help them out if I need to, and they said, okay. So, Adcock right now, they're good with what they're doing, it just takes a little while to get it done.
Appreciate it, thank you for your attention. Anyone else? Move on to number two, considering possibly approve the minutes from the March 11th, 2024, regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make that motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewatt to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number three, considering possibly approve the plat of Prose Pinywoods Estates, Section Two, located on Highway 11, submitted by Robert, am I gonna say this right, Ferrigo? Mr. Bane? Freero. You need to say anything about that, Clint? Do you want to say anything about that plat? I mean, this has been going on for a good bit.
This has been going on. I was thinking that we had actually approved this with the exception of having a six-odd lot, but if we want to go back over this in case he may have any questions. Basically, he is doing a seventeen block subdivision on Highway 11 on 22.373 acres. He's building the roads, he's obtained the performance bond for the road, and I believe that's been turned in to kind of prioritize this.
Clarify, on those roads, is it two years that they have to keep those up before they turn them over, or one?
I was thinking it was two, but I believe our subdivision rules may actually just stay one. That would be something that would be, since this is gonna be in Jimmy's precinct, probably that part of it would be what he would want to address. I know as also the issue of building concrete road, and I may add that, revert to still plans to build a road out of concrete?
Only for the curbs.
Only for the curbs? Okay, but it's gonna otherwise, it's gonna be?
It's gonna be concrete.
Okay.
It does have to be up to standards of the state, is that correct?
It wasn't.
The road has to be standard state road?
Yes, to our specs in the plat that they've got. It has to be built to those specs, as far as width and the ditches and everything.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Bane. Anybody got any questions for Clint?
I make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve the plat for the proposed Pinywoods Estates, Section Two, located on Highway 11.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number four, considering in the reappointment of Titus County NET RAM Board, Nathan Tofoya, and that's from, he's already on that board, and it's a two-year appointment, and so that's what comes back up for that. I don't necessarily have to bring that before, I'd just like to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that. They do have some rail stuff. The NET RAM is who did the parking lot and all out there for Diamond C in that grant, and they've got another grant that's involved us kind of right now, that me and Joe D have went out and looked at, they're adding more to that road. There's a little bit of confusion on that, and I'd like to keep Nathan on that deal because it's not in the city limits, but they're gonna go in the city limits. The money's to us, but we have to bid that out, so I don't want us to be taking on anything that's gonna cost us any money off of that, so I'd like to keep him on that board to make sure that that's all gets done and done properly.
I make a motion to reappoint him.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to reappoint Nathan Tofoya.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. I mean, Parchman, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number five, considering possibly approve the payment of $41,960 to Tri-Special Utilities District, Tri-SUD, for the relocation of waterline in order to allow TechDOT to replace the bridge on County Road 4754, and that's out in Jimmy's precinct.
Yeah, this has been going on for a year and a half, two years now, actually longer than that. This is one of the last one that I know of, of the 32 bridges that were, have been, that TechDOT has fixed in the county over the last several years, and this is the last one, and we finally, they're supposed to left the contract in June, somewhere around the first of June, but Tri-SUD's waterline is right at the, just past the bridge there, and it would actually have been under the head walls and stuff if it had have been left, so that is our responsibility of getting it moved in order to get this bridge completed. So, that's where the $41,960 is what it's gonna cost to move that waterline.
And I know that's kind of expensive, but with TechDOT doing the 100% of the bridge, I don't think that's out of the realm at all. We had to put that bridge in.
Well, it wasn't totally 100%. We had to do some work on some other roads.
Right.
We had to submit those here two years ago, I guess it was, and in order to get that, they done the one on Harts Creek down off of 4550, I believe is the one it was, in Precinct Two, and that was the last one that they done. That was two years ago, or three years ago now, but we had to do some work to pay our, they pay, I think it was 90%, we paid 10%, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, this one is, with us taking care of this, then it's all the others that's taken care of, so.
Yeah.
Also, I want to thank you, Jimmy, on working on that. Also, there was some phone lines and stuff that you had to get okayed out there, and a couple of landowners that we had to get permission on, and I appreciate you getting that done, because we backed up against the wall on this to get it done, so that TechDOT would do that, so.
I make a motion, we approve it.
Make some motion that we approve the payment to Tri-SUD for the $41,960.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number six, is considering possibly approve the resolution approving the issuance of bonds by Tarrant County Cultural Education Facilities Financing Corporation on behalf of Christus Health to finance the cost of health facilities located in Titus County, and with respect to the public hearing. We have Mr. Proctor here today to speak with us about this. Some of this is, I've got a couple of questions before we start, and it has nothing to do with the bond itself. Everybody from Mount Pleasant knows, there's been quite a stir going on with some PID bonds and stuff. Spoke with y'all, you're coming to Mount Pleasant regardless of the PIDs, and they have withdrawn the PID bonds, but y'all's job is, you're coming here anyway, and my understanding, you already got two or three doctors here located in Mount Pleasant already. The one deal that was a little bit, I guess, a concern from everybody was changing from commercial over to hospital, and my understanding is with that, is for your helicopters, is that correct? That's, so.
Yes, Judge, well, thank you for allowing me to come, and thank you Commissioners for giving me a few minutes. Yeah, I think, I just wanted to accomplish two things, kind of tell you what our plan is, and a little bit of our health system, but also to clear up maybe some confusion that might be going on with what the developer has going on over there. So, our involvement with the developer at that piece of land is only to buy a piece of land. We have nothing to do with any financing requests the developer might have, even though I saw last week that he's now gone away from those requests from the city because of some of the confusion, maybe or turmoil that brought up from there. Our only involvement is to buy a piece of land that's about a couple hundred yards past Toyota, right there on Tankersley Drive, about 14 acres, and that is it. So, we are our own health system, we have our own financing that we're gonna talk about here in a minute. Our only involvement with the developer going forward would be he has to provide utilities, you know, at a certain point in time based upon the contract, but any financing, anything going on with the rest of that development behind, we have nothing to do with. Whatever he does or doesn't do does not impact us. We have already made a decision to do this project here, and we will be here regardless of what he does in the future.
Whether, without the PIDs, y'all are here and?
Yeah, we have nothing to do with any of those requests, or PIDs, or bonds, or, I don't even know what they are myself either, right? I had to Google the whole thing myself to read up on it when I heard about it, so we have nothing to do with any of that at all.
So, y'all's 14 acres, even if they did approve that, will never be included in that? That's a separate?
Yeah, nothing. Nothing to do with it. We have our own Treasury Department at Christus Health that's already approved all this project. Our money is sitting there waiting to do things, but we're still working on closing of the land, you know, that process takes a little bit of time, but nothing to do with anything at all with his development in any way.
Okay, you can go ahead, I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure, absolutely, and I'm happy to take.
Before we started a war before.
Any questions? Absolutely, but, you know, here's our deal, so Christus Health, if you don't know, we are a faith-based health system. Our mission is to extend the healing ministry of Jesus Christ, and we take that seriously. I represent the Trinity Mother Frances Health System, which is based in Tyler, but we also have places like Sulfur Springs, you name it, Palestine, Athens, Lindale, Canton, all places that y'all have heard of before, Longview, Texarkana, where Christus is. We have a large health system here in northeast Texas. In Tyler, we just celebrated our 87th anniversary on March 18th, we've been there 87 years, and it is funny, you know, we do have still Catholic sisters that work in our hospital, but they're probably considered pretty progressive because they let a Southern Baptist be the CEO, so. When I pray compared to what they pray, it sounds a little different, but I can tell you, those sisters are totally committed to the people of northeast Texas. They're all from Poland, so if you ever meet one of them, you'll know it immediately. Even though they've lived in Tyler a long time, they still have a very Polish accent, but all we're doing is trying to look at ways to bring more healthcare to more people throughout northeast Texas. This particular project is a $34 million investment here in Titus County, and it's gonna be a 32,000 square foot building that would house a new emergency room that we build based upon the models we've built all over the region. I personally have built five emergency rooms since I've been in Tyler for 10 years. There will also be room for physicians, primary care physicians, specialists, all kinds of things like that, a new physical therapy center, because we see there's a lot of connection with our primary care and our specialists with physical therapy, and the reason, yes, that we needed the zoning change was to have a helipad, right? So, to have a helipad there, you know, kind of make, you gotta do things, right, obviously with the FFA and all that kind of stuff, so we appreciate the city approving the zoning last week, so that you'll have a helipad in case you ever need it for someone who really needs to be moved in helicopter, but that's it. I mean, we're ongoing with moving and growing. We already have a clinic here with some cardiologists that are here, Dr. Kyle Smith is his name. We have electrophysiologists that are in Mount Pleasant, and then we have a primary care physician who's joined Trinity Clinic, some of you might know him, his name is Dr. Jay Cannon, so he's gonna be our lead primary care physician here in Titus County, but we're excited about the opportunity to grow. We understand that it's a commitment, and that y'all need to trust us with healthcare and those types of things, and we look forward to earning that trust along the way as we go. Any questions I can answer? This particular, I skipped over the whole reason I'm here, right? So, when we do bonds, right, we're a tax-exempt, non-for-profit entity, so we will issue a bond, just like you can issue a bond, and a bank will take the bond, the money will pay it back, the same thing. The only thing we need from the county is for you to simply say, we understand, we're applying for a bond in Titus County. So, a couple of years ago, I was in Henderson County in Athens, doing the exact same thing. We built a new emergency room, all kinds of things there for them, expanded our clinic, and we did it exactly the same way. But these bonds are issued in the name of Christus Health, and banks picked them up all across the country, and you know how that goes. Your bond pays, what, 3% to 5% based upon the interest rate? So, that's all this is, and it's just to agree to have the judge say, we understand this investment's coming in Titus County, and we move forward. Any questions on that, Judge?
Like I said, I appreciate you coming, Mr. Proctor, and I just like to, we try to run things as open as we can, and so that's why we wanted you here today to speak on that, and to clarify all that. The bonds have nothing to do with Titus County, doesn't affect anything of our bond is anything, it's all their bonds, it's just us okaying the federal government to let them have a tax-free bond there.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve it.
A motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve this with Christus and their financial bonds.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly approve a discretionary exemption under local government code, section 262.024A6, for the purchase and lease of real estate to be used as right of way related to the new county fire department on the basis of preserving and protecting the public health and safety of the residents of Titus County. What this does is, it puts one or two of us on a committee, so that we can go out and get a real estate agent to help us with any land purchases, to that nature, or if we do any leases of any buildings or anything of that nature, they would write leases in that, so that we've got someone with legal content doing that. Also, it does free it up, if we do, if we do talk to an agent, whoever we do make that person, once we do do that, we will go into an executive session and speak on any land purchases, lease agreements, anything of that nature, and then vote on that, but that just lets one or two members of the Commissioners meet with an agent and get land or borrow a building taken care of.
I make a motion to appoint you as, Judge Cooper is the one that's looking for this, for land and leases.
Okay. Got a motion made.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Only one thing that I would like to add to that proposal, I'd like to have one of y'all, either Joe D or somebody with building experience. Joe D did used to put up a lot of buildings and stuff, that's what his job was, was putting up those kind of buildings. I'm not an expert on it, so I'd definitely like to have him along with me if y'all don't have a problem with that, if it's metal buildings or something of that effect, and so.
Will we be kept informed as to how this is moving?
Just like I said, anything that we do on any land or anything, we'll look at it, we won't make any decisions, we'll go into executive session and talk about any thing. This just frees it up, so that one person can go talk to them and get a price, get a location, and things of that nature. But yes, we will be kept up to date. So, I want to make the proposal that I'll be the head of it with Joe D as an assistant to me. Joe D will be out of town some with his wife's health issues, so I don't think we can throw it all on Joe D with him being out of town, but I would like his expertise along with me. So, I'll make that motion, if I get a second.
Second on the same deal, or?
We're just clarifying it, where that I'll be and Joe D will be an assistant on it.
I second that.
Got a second by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That'll carry unanimously. Number eight, considering possibly approve a payment of Fire Chief Solutions for the first installment of $15,000 on the contract with Titus County by the first day of April 2024. This is the contract that we finally did get signed with Fire Chief Solutions, and the first payment is due on that on the 1st of April. There has been some stuff done with that. We have started buying some equipment and some breathing apparatuses and things of that nature, so we started moving forward on that. He's supposed to be working on communications and also on figuring out as far as space goes, and that's why we've got the one above it, and this is first payment on that contract. Contract was 56,000, and this will be the initial payment of the 15,000 for him.
I make a motion to make the $15,000 payment on the contract.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to make the first installment of 15,000 on the contract with Titus County on the first day, before the first day of April there, 2024.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Just one?
Me.
Two? I say aye, so three to two. So, we've got to move forward with getting our fire department built, so. Number nine, approve oil and written reports of the county officials.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve those reports of county officials.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewatt. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 10, considering possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
I make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve that treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number, the budgeted amendments. Mr. Nannier, you're the speaker.
We have two budget amendments for this time. The first budget amendment is gonna be 2024-12, that is to budget and create the new emergency management department at the county, that we're gonna be budgeting the remaining salary of the emergency management coordinator, as well as the fringe benefits. We're also going to put into place oil and gas at $6,000, supplies at $1,000. We're gonna have a miscellaneous line of $1,000 for anything that comes up. This is gonna be moved from the contingency. Are there any questions? The next budget amendment is gonna be 2024-13, that is to transfer from the contingency fund of the general county, the $42,000 that's gonna be needed in order for us to complete the project for County Road 4754, that's gonna be transferred into Precinct Four and gonna be operated through Precinct Four, since it does reside in that precinct. The funds will be provided by contingency. Any questions?
That last one is for the bridge, so that we can get that for TechDOT, correct? Just moving that money over.
That's for the bridge, the water movement of the bridge.
Make a motion, we approve the budget amendments.
Got a motion made to approve the budget amendments by Mr. Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 12, sign pay orders and approve our payments.
Make a motion to repair bills.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number 13, closing comments by the Commissioners.
The only thing, if it went outside, just be careful driving.
Be careful driving.
Only thing, only thing I've got is, I would just like to, and I made this statement last time, be a little more informed of kind of what we're doing with the fire department and all. Don't seem like that I can get anything up until, you know, the meeting or whatever. I know this was on there, but didn't know anything about what was going on or anything else, so I'd just like to have a little more input on what's going on before I make a decision on it.
Not a problem. We also have Greg's number here, and any of y'all can reach out and speak with him. I'm giving it to, Marcus Williams is getting his number, went and looked right at you, can't call your name, Mark. He's gonna call him, he's gonna give him updates, can't get them all, I can't give you the updates, but you can get those from him. He's willing to speak to anybody. I've talked to him a couple of times on the phone, he's told us everything that's going on, very transparent, no problems at all, so I'll get you this number, and you can certainly handle that, but we do have to move forward and get this fire department going, so.
Yeah, I understand that.
Want to mention, we lost one of our veterans yesterday, Mr. Ellis Moore passed away, he's 99 years old. I was working on some things, and I hate it that he has moved forward. The VA cut some of his benefits back from. back, uh, from forty-something hours a week, uh, to twenty-something hours, and that, that really put a hardship on the, on the family and, uh, on him evidently, uh, and, uh, I just, it's, uh, it's tough when we lose one, but when we lose a veteran like that, uh, ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's really, really, it kind of gets to me, they're the ones that fought for us to be able to live the way we live right now, and, uh, for them to get their benefits and stuff cut back, uh, at ninety-nine years of age is, is pretty rough, uh, but I do appreciate all the veterans that did serve our country so that we can live in this world that we live in, uh, one of the greatest worlds in America, this is it, uh, the best, and, uh, we appreciate their service, and so, with that being said, I'll, uh, take a motion to, to adjourn if anyone.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell at nine thirty to adjourn.
Okay.
Got a second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously.